We are six o'clock having arrived and we'll call the regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hahn.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim.
Yes.
Mayor Taft.
Yes, seven members of the village board being present and answering their roll. Core being established, we're going to proceed with the order of business as set forth on the agenda. For the record, today is Tuesday, November seventeenth of two thousand and twenty. We're at Sherman Village Hall, four oh one St. John's Drive in Sherman, Illinois. The time is six o'clock. It is a regular meeting of the village board of trustees. That all being said will bring us to item number two on the agenda, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. If I could ask everybody to stand, face the flag, and let's have, um, Engineer Coon will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. We haven't seen you.
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we've set the agenda. Here's the process of forty-eight hours in advance that they open events of the meeting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. No action items added to the agenda. Does anybody, any trustees seeking recognition for discussion purposes only? Anything to discuss? Seeing none, we need the chairman to entertain a motion to set the agenda. Trustee Hahn makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Gray, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed. The ayes have it. The agenda is set. So we'll move to the clerks' report. Item number one from village clerk Sean Bull is the presentation of the October twentieth, two thousand and twenty regular board meeting minutes that are presented for approval. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Any additions or corrections? Okay, seeing none, we need a motion to approve the bill, or here goes, the minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Rockford. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no. The minutes are approved and will be added to the village website for viewing and dissemination. Item number two is the presentation of the bills. They are presented by, for approval. They're in the board members' packets. You have your listing of bills. Is there staff? Is there anything to point out that's outside the normal course of business for the month? Trustees, anybody wishing, uh, now we're down on some staff here, so if you've got some in-depth questions, we may need to get back with you on it if it's like something from the police department or, or what. But anybody have any questions regarding the bills?
No.
No questions? Okay, so we need a motion to approve payment of the bill or payment of the bills. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Schultz makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Gray. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
That's six members voting yes, none voting no. The bills will be approved for payment and sent out by administrative staff. There is no treasurer's report this evening. We're going to bring Mr. Stunkel in, I think, at the next meeting, and he'll have several reports to work through and go over. He's been working diligently to get through those. I talked to him the other day and I reported to Trustee Schultz that same, same thing. But, um, so he should have, uh, some reports to present at the next meeting, hopefully, right?
Yes.
Okay. Village engineer, Engineer Coon is here. Do we have anything to report on?
Governor's going to lock down the state. I'll see you on the other side.
I do have, I had someone ask me about village manager. Did we do anything for that?
We have that.
Okay, because I knew we talked about it, but I didn't know any plan.
We did some investigation and looking at whether somebody else was supposed to do some stuff. We kind of ran that around. We probably should look at it in the spring. We'll, we'll evaluate all roads in the spring once we get through winter.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding engineering? It looks like they're making very, very good progress on the bike trail. If you've seen the location, especially the parking lot where the trailhead, the trail end is at, and then just east of that, you can see the clearing for where the path is going to be, and you get a pretty good shot straight down there to see the work that's been progressing. So we had an exciting announcement regarding that bike trail and a groundbreaking, and the next thing will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony, so that'll be exciting.
What do they think will be done? Quicker than it took to get here. Right. Trustee Schultz.
Uh, I don't, actually, I don't know. It was a year, a year and a half, something like that.
I think it was less than that. I think it was sometime in the, they were, like, I talked to the owner of the water bomb. He said he's probably thinking about.
Fall twenty-one?
Yeah, latest.
Yeah, there's, I don't know if you remember, there's some whole-timing issue with the Indiana bat. Yeah. Like, the roosting, so I think they're in the prime time to take all those trees out right now. And so they're hitting it, they're hitting it pretty hard. I don't want to throw a shit away, but I thought it was a year.
So that'd be a very good asset and amenity to the town. Anything else? Anybody have any questions regarding engineering? Okay, so let's move on to the legal report. So councillor Craven is not here right now. He may be showing up. He's councillor, councillor for another town and is trying to divide and split the time, but with this being a lighter agenda, he's in limbo right now. So it'll be nothing under legal, legal just yet. Village administrator, economic development coordinator, do you have anything to report?
I don't know.
Okay. What time do we have? What time is it?
Six oh eight.
Okay, six oh eight.
You want to report outside?
Checking our time. Okay, so that moves us to the president's report. Okay, so I have, uh, oh, they're both on here. Okay, I'm sorry. So item number one of the president's report is the approval to hire a full-time police officer. And item number two is approval to hire a full-time police officer on the lateral program. So just give me two minutes here to explain what's going on to the extent that I, I mean, I think I briefed everybody individually in our conversations that we have, just, you know, throughout the course of the weeks when we're not sitting here. But, well, Trustee Tim is on the phone. So Trustee Tim sat in on one of these interviews for sure. The chief of police, myself, and the deputy chief of police. We are recommending, all four of us, these police officer hires. Item number one is the hiring of a police officer who needs to go through training. He is a Sherman resident. He's been a resident for, and, and, an individual that many people know around this community. I'm going to say that here in a second and read a little bit of his bio, so that you have a background on him and so that other individuals do as well. And then another individual is going to be hired in from, on the lateral program. The lateral program is something that we instituted more recently to be competitive with police officer salaries, of which we were getting behind, not getting behind, but we were not able to be competitive because of the union contract and the stipulations and the language that was in it. Where we had an officer go to other employment in another town, city, or state, or whatever the situation was, we were essentially hamstrung and forced to bring a new officer in if a starting officer suffers. A lot of departments, I always point the same county for one that we all know, and it's easy to point to, instituted this lateral contract language, where police officers, union and management have agreed that this is a continuing issue within the policing field and that recruitment of officers, bringing them in at a salary that is compensable to where they're at or slightly above in order to retain or to recruit them, is advantageous to that department. So I've said it in here in the past, and I'll say it again right now, but that is the vibe of stuff going on in policing these days, the defund the police movements with state's attorneys not standing behind police officers when they're in the, in the right and creating certain political pressure. And then if an officer is in the wrong, um, you know, becoming the headline news stories, and that transcending to many other officers throughout that career field. So what you're seeing, if you talk to leadership in other departments, in other cities, towns, villages, you're seeing that there's police officers that are getting out of policing because they have, you know, pensions that will allow them to retire right now or do an early buyout. They're looking like, City of Springfield, for example, have individuals that are seeking to even go to be firemen. Or just getting out of policing altogether. Then you've got the General Assembly that is actually discussing, you know, police reforms and whatever those reforms constitute and talking about qualified immunity, taking away qualified immunity for police officers. And that puts them in their assets, their personal assets, their house, you know, kids' college tuitions, everything at stake in the duties and actions of what they do as a police officer. So you're seeing a lot of these individuals just getting, getting out of this. Well, what's that, what is that doing? The good police departments, like the really good ones that have good trained officers and that, you know, county and the state, the city know, they hear our radio traffic. They know how our officers handle the calls. We, we've always been a very good police department to recruit from, and that's still happening, continues to this day. So we've lost some officers due to the vacancies that are occurring in these bigger departments and us being one of the top-notch departments in this county, so it's in a vacuum. And they're going and seeking those other places of employment because the salaries are higher and the pensions are, you know, better. So we've lost some officers due to those circumstances, and now that puts us to the situation where we're at right now. So we've got a twenty-two-year veteran. He's from the village of Pawnee. He does not desire to actually go on to one of the bigger departments. He's been, I'll read it here in a second, uh, he's been with Pawnee for twenty-two years. His salary is higher than what we would typically have at the starting level, and he's looking for just a little bit of change as well as staying in the smaller policing. So Chief Banger knew of him, reached out to him, or he reached out, however it all played out. We interviewed him. Trustee Tim was on the line, sat in and had an interview. Fully recommends us hiring him. And then the other individual is a young guy who's been putting an application in with the Sherman Police Department on a couple of different occasions as we've hired and always came back, and he's been right, he's been right there. But for whatever reason, you know, we had one guy or two guys that we were bringing in, and he was, so, he's got this, you know, the fortitude to stick with it and still wants to do it. So we brought him in and, you know, sat him down, had an interview. He interviewed very well, and we're recommending that he be hired. So that, that being said, the new officer that we'd like to bring on, Chief Banger, is out. I think everybody knows why. We all know why. But anyway, he can't be here this evening. So the first officer is going to be the recommended hire for a full-time position. He will go through the academy of Stephen Brent, Brent Construction. You know, he's built a lot of houses around here. So I'll just tell you this real quick about him. Stephen's been self-employed, owner-operator of his own business, Brent Construction, since two thousand and five. He's established a successful local business, mostly new home construction. He plans to continue his business. In addition to his duties as a police officer, chairman of police officer, he lives in close proximity to the village. Stephen interviewed previously for a part-time vacancy and returned when a full-time posting was issued. He tells us that he has had a lifelong interest in law enforcement, and working at the Sherman PD would satisfy his dream to be a police officer. Stephen and his girlfriend of ten years are the parents of two daughters that attend Sherman Elementary School. Stephen is scheduled to attend Basic Law Enforcement Training Academy at Southwestern Illinois College, November twenty twenty through March of two thousand and twenty-one. Chief typed this up and wanted to communicate this all to you. The lateral hire is Sean Burnley. Sean lives in Auburn right now, but plans to relocate here. Sean is an almost twenty-two-year veteran of the Pawnee Police Department. He's been active in training during his tenure, attending many in-service and specialty courses to include basic school re, resource officer, juvenile officer, sex assault investigator, sex offender registration, crisis intervention team, basic field training officer, and first-line supervisor, to highlight a few. He was the first Pawnee officer to be K nine certified and equipped. He is a certified firefighter, emergency medical technician. He has served with the Pawnee Fire Protection District since nineteen ninety-nine, currently as fire chief. He is a part-time Sangamon County coroner. He is seeking a more progressive police agency to be part of, that will accommodate his community policing skills and be part of a team effort. Sean is married and the father of four children. They're excited to make this change and are looking to relocate to the Sherman area soon. So I wanted to get that on the record and let you all know, and that's what the chief wanted me to communicate to you in his absence. So that being said, we should and we need to hire up these, these officers right now. To, you know, I mean, we're covering staffing. We haven't missed a beat essentially through all of this, but we've got to get fully staffed and we need to bring these guys in. So, um, I'll open it up for any discussion. If anybody have anything they must say, say, if you may know any of these individuals, or are you comfortable with moving forward? I think you are, because we've had that kind of general personal conversations. Anything, anybody? No?
It's Tim's going to recommend.
Yeah, so, uh, Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion to and consolidate items number one and item number two on the agenda for the hiring of a full-time police officer, which will be Stephen Brent, and the hiring of a full-time police officer on the lateral program of Sean Burnley? Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Trustee Tim makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Hahn seconds the motion. There's no further discussion, correct, right? So, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Okay, so there's six trustees voting yes. I fully believe and stand behind these two hires. So the majority see the favorable vote, allows the village president to vote on it as well. So if you could please record me as a yes, that will bring the vote total to seven members voting yes, none voting no. It's a unanimous vote of the village board, and we will instruct the chief to reach out to these individuals and get them established and started further than they are right now. Item number three is a contract for a fireworks display with Central State's fireworks. So I'll just wrap this up really quickly. We had every intention of still trying to do a tree lighting ceremony in the village of Sherman. With the amount of cases that are being presented in Sangamon County and mitigations, um, being taken, we were still going to essentially ask and mandate that individuals stay within the proximity of their car, do somewhat of a drive-in, um, tree lighting ceremony, count it down with the audio speakers from Brent Audio, right?
Mason, Mason.
Mason Sound, I'm sorry. Mason Sound, and still try to provide something through all of this twenty-twenty chaos that is, you know, that is, um, you know, a benefit and something good for the children and families of the town. But we're going to go, we went ahead and, of course, we told them to go ahead and light up the park. So the roundabout, the tree is already lit. We lit it today, tonight. Um, the lights are on there. Meredith Drive is going to be lit as soon as a, Amarin does a quick connection on a light pole that was hit where the power act was actually, everybody plugs into that. So we don't need to move forward on this fireworks contract. It's going to be part of the lighting of the tree ceremony. We still have intentions to train, do the Willie the Frog competition for kids. Could be modified in some respects so that, you know, there's social distance. That's not really a thing where people conjugate anyway, so, um, but the award ceremony would not be a big gathering. We have talked about doing a, a Facebook Live, um, drawing the winners, and then delivering the prizes in a special way for the kids that win. So we're still working through those details. We still want to do, you know, special things for the town this holiday season, but having the tree lighting ceremony, it's probably best that we don't, and so we're not going to. So you know we need to move forward on the fireworks contract that was on there. Committee of department reports? Anybody have anything to report? Sherman Police Department, Chief Banger is not in attendance. Sherman Emergency Management Agency, Mike Moses, not in attendance to see the Sangamon Public Works Director Newton. New business, is nothing, any new business coming before the board? Old business, no, old business, and we do not have any civic organizations seeking recognition. It's going to bring us to the public comment period. So here's what I'm going to say right now, and that is that executive session is listed after the public comment period. I'm going to, I'm going to go to the public comment period now. I have one individual who had, or two, I'm sorry, two individuals who have signed in to address the board. Then we're going to resolve ourselves into executive session, and only the person who's entitled to the chamber will be allowed to stay in here. We are not going to, and I'm going to have to ask everybody to leave because of the setup of this village hall. Going on the record and stipulating for individuals in the audience and also for the record, there will be no action taken on anything that's discussed in executive session. So you can feel free to, uh, leave and enjoy the rest of your evening, or you could come back in essentially if you wanted to watch us gavel back in and adjourn within seconds. Not needed, but more than welcome to do so. So that being said, we're going to go into the public comment period. Public comment period, um, is a three-minute comment period for individuals of the town to address the village board. It's not a dialogue, it's not a back-and-forth conversation. You know, state whatever you have to state, take that under consideration and advisement. If you want to contact or talk to any of the trustees after the meeting or via their email, cell phones, whatever it may be. But, um, I just need to stipulate that, let's see a new name on the, on the, on the sign sheet. So, listen, you have a three-minute time. Mr. David Mirable is here, so I would invite him to the podium and give you the floor for three minutes.
Yep, thanks for having me. I just wanted to address the board on a recent issue I had with a local business. Kind of, I think, Mike's rare a little bit, so I don't know what I should and shouldn't say, but I basically was, had some credit card fraud. Made a police report, and kind of the response I got was a little disappointing. So I tried to bring that to the mayor's attention, and he held him twice and never got a response with that either. Again, I was kind of hoping the chief would be here so I could, you know, discuss with him or at least address to him. But my wife made the police report, and we were told that it happened multiple times before and that there was really nothing that could be done because of the certain situation. So I asked the chief, calls back, and he called back my wife and said, what do you want me to do? Put it on a billboard? Because we had asked them to just, well, maybe alert the community. We're not trying to get a business shut down. We're not trying to get anybody from jail, but it's kind of serious. And the fact that they told us it happened numerous times before, we thought, well, maybe let's make this public information. So we're, again, the chief told us what he wanted me to do, put it on a billboard, which is not what we were looking for, but maybe a Facebook post, not even having the name of the business, but just, hey, alert to the public, uh, credit card issues going on with local businesses, beware. Chief also asked my wife if our bank was reimbursing us, which I needed the police report for that, and we said yes, and his response was, well, then they're not stealing from you, they're stealing from your bank, as if we were to not worry about it because of that. So again, a little disappointed. I, Sherman's a great community, it's safe because chief and his department, so I understand this is a one-time thing and not an issue I have with the police department, but again, was disappointed in the response. And after I made that report through social media and other posts I've seen online, it happened subsequent, subsequent times, two to three days afterwards. And then kind of doing some more digging, this has happened several times before and has not been addressed. So I just wanted to bring it up to the board and hope there can be some sort of response. And again, I never heard back from the mayor's office either, so, you know, just looking for some kind of response.
Okay, um, so I guess I would give you a response to that. I did learn of that, and it was actually on election day. Yep. And I talked to the chief. Within an hour of actually, I, I don't know if it was you that reported it or your wife or who it may have been, and at that point in time, it was an active and open investigation. And so when I was dealing with that, when I was, when I was getting the information communicated to me, it was that, and I'm going to be, I gotta be real careful here in terms of what I say, and I think, and I don't want you to go too far either. But what was communicated to me was that this may or may not involve juveniles. And so the status of the case completely changes in terms of anything that anybody can actually say, including the police, police department and police officers, and that they would be working on it and handling it on their end. So I didn't, you know, think it, well, I, it was something to be left for the police department to handle anyway. It did not.
Can I, may I respond? And I, like I said, I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble, business shutdown, anything like that. And I think your response right there was kind of more of what I was looking for, you of Chief Banger or his officers. Yep, we've received reports, we'll look into it. And instead, they almost turned it on us like we're the guilty, like, well, don't you know what's going on there? And don't you know this and why? You know, we get it. And it was just, again, a disappointing response. And I, again, understand the situation, but I don't think that excuses it to not be, from what I understand, it's been going on for months, from what the officers told us, so.
And I'll just, I'll just tell you, I honestly did not see your email. So I apologize for not seeing your email.
Fair enough.
It's been, in my regular employment, has been very, very busy up until election day and subsequently after and stuff like that. That's no excuse or whatever, but I, you know, and if I'd seen, do I know your name and know you, whatever? If I seen it, I'd have contacted you or whatever and told you that right there. So I had no idea why you even signed in tonight to say whatever. So my apologies for not seeing your email, but, um, I got a lot of emails that are clogging up right now and I've had a phone issue, so, you know, they got in the phone, because it's, uh, it's broke. It's been acting up and doing some things, but that's no excuse. So I apologize for that. Again, though, when, when that happened within, because somebody texted me that was on a text string asking if this was true or whatever, and I hadn't even heard at that point in time because there's some things that are way faster, I said it in here, than, you know, the chief communicating to the mayor or, you know, the, the fire chief or whatever, and nobody's as fast as Facebook and text messaging and stuff like that. So a constituent and a friend said, is there any truth to this? I honestly didn't know at that point in time, but I was working and doing some election stuff. So I kept contacting the chief immediately, and so he communicated to me that we just got this, you know, within the hour, we're trying to handle whatever, this may involve juveniles, because he talked about, you know.
Right.
Well, I'm not going to say it's you or your wife, because I don't know if he was talking to somebody else or whatever, but, but the sentiment that was communicated was, should you guys put up a, a, a Facebook post or some kind of notification to let people know what's going on? And then I discussed that with him, um, right, you know, he told me, he's like, this may, from our very initial investigation, may potentially involve juveniles, and we can't, we can't get, get into that too extensively, especially right now while it's an open investigation. So I honestly just assumed that, you know, they've been handling it and taking care of it.
And I completely understand all that. I was a stupid kid too, and so that, that's not my, my end goal here. Again, it, the first answering officer on the telephone made it sound like this has been going on for an extended period of time. To me, it's kind of like, okay, well. like, okay, well...
See, and I, I'll follow up and I'll get back with you, or you can give me a call or whatever, but that's not the extent of what I understand it to be, I, in terms of a habitual ongoing thing, I think there may have been another instance, and I don't know, maybe there's two or three, I'll follow back up again, but when I had a conversation with him, he said that, and like I said, we were talking an hour into it, that the county may have taken a report on this, you know, a few days ago or something.
Well, and truthfully, my experience, the way it went down, I was able to kinda pinpoint, okay, that's where it came from, whereas who knows how many others haven't been able to do that, you know, just, we probably all use credit cards 100 times a day, and when things happen, who knows, but for my specific instance, I was able to point the finger pretty definitively, so...
Yeah.
And that's all, I just...
No, I'm glad you came up, and I'm, actually, I would've never known that, you know, I may have, like, seen you somewhere, and, you know, responded to me or whatever, and I would've never known, actually, so I apologize or whatever, but, you know, if I can follow up on this and then get back with you, I'll let you know a little bit more, to the extent as far as I can go with it being a case that would potentially involve juveniles, or doesn't.
Understood, thank you.
Yep, okay. Next individual, Mrs. Sandro Walden.
I just wanted to check with you about the status of the dog next door, the lady who's breeding dogs, July 25th is kinda gone a long time ago, and there's still, she's still breeding dogs over there, and they're still doing their business in the backyard, so...
Mr. Stratton and I have discussed this, and the recommendation to make to the board on the executive sessions.
Okay.
Good question.
Okay, all right, thanks.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. All right, so that's gonna conclude the public comment period, period, if anybody else wants to speak, another public comment, see none, so we're gonna move to executive session. Item number one is to resign into executive session as allowed under 5 ILCS 120/2C 12511 of the Open Meetings Act. That being said, I mean, a motion to go into executive sessions or a motion to that effect, trustee Long makes a motion, or seconded by trustee Hahn, all with favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I need a roll call. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Six members voting yes and none voting no, the village board will resolve itself into executive session, we'll stand at these till the chamber clears out, the time is, what's the time?
6:34.
6:34 for the record, so we'll stand at these for about two minutes, let this, let this...